So I'm calling our Personnel Meeting to Order. And do you want to do the roll call, Kate?
We can have, sorry, Jennifer's here, so we can have her do it.
Okay, great.
Ms. Krishnam.
Here.
Mr. Parise.
Here.
Ms. Unical.
Here.
And do we have an approval of the agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do we need to do a roll call on the agenda? Okay.
Ms. Krishnam.
Yes.
Mr. Parise.
Yes.
Ms. Unical.
Yes.
I assume we have no public comments.
Because we have no public.
And I assume we have no unfinished business, as this is our first meeting of the Personnel Committee. So the new business is discussion of the process for evaluating the Executive Director.
And I know you guys are going to want to get into this. If I could, since we don't usually do committees, and I know I sent an email out, but I thought it would be helpful to just pause for a minute and talk a little bit about the Open Meetings Act, because it does change depending on the size of the group. And Barbara, I know you still, the Attorney General's website is still down, so you still can't take the training. So I think that this is also to help you, because you haven't been able to go through the official training yet. So as a committee of three, a majority of a quorum is considered to be two people. And you are not allowed to talk about library business with a majority of a quorum outside of an open meeting, meaning that we have to post a public agenda 48 hours in advance, and then have the list of what we are going to be discussing on that agenda. So because the group, because it's a committee of three, that means that each of you cannot talk to the other about what this committee will talk about. However, you can, if you have a question, you are always welcome to send something to me. I can send out informational items. We just can't engage in discussion outside of the open meetings. But I am always, because I'm not actually, you know, privy to, you know, I'm not a board member, so I can share information with you. So if you have stuff that you want to share, just always send it to me, and then I can share it with the group, and then any discussion will happen at the next open meeting that we're going to have. Questions on that?
Is ever happening, but I'm assuming that means that none of us would have a separate conversation with, say, Jay. Say, we run into him on the street, we're not going, that's the same. We're not going to have a discussion about what we talked about in this meeting. Okay. Just.
Yeah, you can, because Jay is not actually a member of the committee, but I think it is a good idea to try and avoid that when possible. But for instance, if, you know, another board member wanted an update, you know, we'll of course share the minutes with them. But yes, the safest thing with a group this small is to avoid that. But technically, for the normal board meetings, because a majority of a quorum is four, we have a little bit more, or a quorum is four, so a majority of a quorum is three, we have a little bit more leeway.
Thank you, Kate.
Sure. Okay. And that's it for all the official stuff. I'm going to mute myself now unless you guys need me.
All right. Barbara, thank you for sending out the articles. I thought that was very helpful and concise.
Great. I found it to be helpful and research-based and practical.
Right.
So I'm glad that you did too.
Yes, and I felt it sort of fell into the heading of, we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
One of my favorite sayings. So when we refer to the article, I mean, there are a couple of things, if it's okay, Maura, if I take the floor, that seem to be pretty self-evident, such as, it should be a yearly process, that it should be in writing, an evaluation should be in writing. And it should be goals, you know, that are measurable and observable. And I think that, I think those are just three elements that define the template for it, not the categories. So I don't know how you feel about saying that.
I agree with all of that. I thought the setting of goals, I thought, was an important one, that I hadn't really considered, that that's an important one, to make sure that everybody's on the same page about what the goals for the coming year are.
And again, I think then what it becomes apparent is that we're all on the same page, and we all will know if they have been met. Not just, what do you think? Or if it's a number that we're trying to reach, like increasing the usage of whatever, then it's a percentile, so that's easily measured.
Right.
But with other things, how do you know? What does it look like if success has been met? And I think that's, gives it, for us, quantifiable rather than subjective.
Right. And having said that, I think that having goals in place for last year would not have done anyone any good, just because it would have been impossible to have set goals for.
Exactly.
2020. So I think the question I would have is, how do we go about the, how do we go about setting those goals, if we're going to stick on that topic for a minute?
Well, I think that what I liked about this particular article was determining what the areas of goal setting should be.
Right.
Whether it was staff relationships, or facilities, budget, all of those things, as just the broad categories, and then the goals will change every year.
Before we move on, is our goal to eventually develop a form that, like what they linked in this document? Is that our ultimate goal after this process? Is that what we're trying to?
I think it's more develop a process rather than a product.
Create. I'm sorry, it went a little bit.
I'm sorry. I said, I think, for me, it's developing a process more than, which will result in a yearly written evaluation.
But I don't think we're coming up with the.
The goals.
The goal, or the.
So we're not coming up with, like, an evaluation form, or a rubric, or something like that?
No. I think the goals, although I think those are two separate things, the, I don't think we're coming up with the form. I don't think that's in our wheelhouse. But to come up with, to help to identify the goals, I think that would be.
And it's very clear that the goals have to be established with Kate.
Right, definitely, yes.
Now, I just asked, sorry, I don't want to interrupt. You guys are having a great discussion. What article are you guys talking about?
I think I sent that to you, Kate. It's called Short Takes for Trustees.
Oh, that one. Okay, okay, sorry.
Evaluating the Library Director.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we include that in the minutes, so that it is reflected. And we'll put a link to, so that the other trustees, if they want to see it. Okay.
So as far as setting those goals, how would we go about? Is that something we are doing in a meeting with Kate? Is that something we're asking Kate to do separately and provide us with goals as more of a sort of self-pre-evaluation, if that's a term?
I don't know. And maybe it's a combination of both.
Okay.
Where, for instance, fiscally or the budget, that we're looking at setting the goals with Kate. Staff development, that kind of thing, Kate can certainly, but I think it all is in concert. And also, there needs to be a, how will we know if it's successful? So that takes care of the rubric.
Okay.
The how will it be successful is built right into the goal.
Right. So how do you measure success? How do you measure it?
Well, again, it could be a percentile. It could be evidenced by a survey. If you want something, it can be evidenced by how much under budget, or how well we've stayed within budget. Depending on what it is that we're talking about, some are easier than others, but they all have to be observable. In other words, you have to look at the end result, Kate has to look at the end result and say, ah, we agree. She, the goal was met.
And if at any point in this process, it would be helpful for me to get samples, I'm happy to pull, you know, other libraries to get samples to see kind of what some of those other goals and things. Not everyone is going to do it this way, but I think sometimes it's helpful. If you guys ever want to see examples, I know there were some in the article, but I'm happy to pull and gather whatever other information is needed for you guys as you go through this process. Just let me know.
Okay. I think there are some that are going to be very specific to a library, and some that are going to be more general to an executive director. And so I think that we can work with other libraries and with, we can kind of do some research on what the goals would be, what we think the goals would be, this certainly is not, and then to begin that conversation. And I'm pretty certain that Kate already, knowing Kate, she's got information related to that. But then I think there's other sort of, there are goals that are specific to a director in general, or specific to a non-for-profit director, that I think will be more general.
Right, and there are things, and the strategic plan is mentioned regularly in this article. And I don't know if we've ever, in fact, correlated the strategic plan with evaluation. In other words, what are we, what is Kate doing to meet the goals of the strategic plan? And how should those be woven in as well?
And that we did do in 2019. We, the plan, the strategic plan was passed in 2018. And so then in 2019, that was, we did look at the strategic priorities and action items as it related to how, you know, those were my goals, right? And then, and then of course, last year, we didn't really talk about that as much. I think I touched on it a little bit in my narrative, and then, of course, this year, we didn't really at all. So, but I absolutely, because those are, that's where all of the work has been done, is through the strategic plan of, this is where we want the library to go. This is the, you know, the board sets the direction, and it's my job to then take us there. So it ties in so beautifully together.
Another clarifying question I had is, even though the goals are negotiated, these areas, are they pretty much fixed? Or are there areas that are missing from this? There's a bullet list here on page, let me see.
Two.
Yeah, page three, actually, yeah. So, I mean, are these pretty much fixed areas, or are there areas that need to be addressed as well? I mean, this should include, but are there, do include in these areas?
I think it's whatever we want. I think it's got to be tailored to our goals and our needs. I think these are really great topics, but are they all-inclusive? I don't think so. So I think we can, that's the nice part about it. It's whatever we want to make it.
Right.
And that's where I think samples can be helpful, because it might provide some alternative ways of looking at it. I mean, there's a million different ways you could look at things. I have a presentation I do for new library directors on the general areas of responsibility of a library director, and we have 18 different categories that you have to be kind of aware of and juggle and figure out. And so I'm not suggesting we have 18 categories on an evaluation, but I'm saying that there's a lot of different ways to splice it. And so I'm happy to, again, provide, if it would be helpful, to provide some lists, some samples. Certainly able to do that.
Well, I think it's more important, rather than looking at somebody else's, is to look at where the strategic plan and the evaluation need to come together. I mean, I don't know what somebody is doing in Niles as a goal, but is it relevant to what your goal is? I don't know.
Yeah. I, no, absolutely, because I don't think it can be specific to, like you said, what happens in Niles isn't necessarily here. There are certainly similarities, right? Like, we all have staff that we're working with. We all have buildings, right? We all have boards. But like, I think a good example with the strategic plan is, you know, it was written in 2018. Well, now we have this whole EDI initiative. We have the Climate Action Plan that the village is working on. None of those are reflected in there. I also think one of the things that makes Northbrook the great community it is, is because of the cooperation between the different governmental agencies. So the intergovernmental cooperation, to me, is such a key thing that is reflected a little in the strategic plan, but is such a core of what makes Northbrook the strong community it is. That that would necessitate it being an area of focus, right? Like, I couldn't just be like, nah, I don't need to talk with them or work with them. Like, that is really a key aspect of my job.
That's very helpful, because I think community relations, just on the face of it, would appear to me, or I think just, and it's like your relationship with just the community in general, kind of a, as opposed to what you're talking about, which is intergovernmental relationships. That's a little bit more specific. That's also, so that's a helpful area. And your point about the strategic plan is something we need to be attentive to, but it doesn't capture all of these new initiatives that we're engaged in, you know? So.
That's why it can be tailored. And another favorite saying of mine is, it's not written in stone. So if, from one year to the next, there's a greater emphasis, or, you know, if construction is happening, and that has to be a focus for one year, but it's not the next year, then that's not a goal. That's not an area that we look at.
Essentially, the board, at least from my perspective, is looking at things from like, the very top of the Ferris wheel. So you can see the widest view of what is coming, and see what has happened, and think about not just what needs to happen now, but also how are we, because it isn't, you know, we look at things in one-year chunks, but realistically, we're looking, I'm looking at things that are three, four years down the road, of how are we positioning ourselves now, so we're ready for that? How are we getting ready? It isn't, it can't be just the immediate future and the board's goal of really looking at what, as a whole, we need to be doing to move the library, and what are the specific actions to move us forward this year? But then what are the other things we need to start working on, so we're ready two years from now, when it's time to start doing the things? All have to be taken into account. So it's that, you know, like in David Allen's, he's got the different, you know, the 5,000, the 10,000, the 20,000-foot view of looking at it through all those different lenses, because I might be spending one year doing a lot of prep work for something that won't come to fruition for another three or four years. But it's so critical, if you don't lay that foundation, you'll never actually achieve it, or it will be done in a very slapdash manner.
So really good points.
Can we pause for a minute? What is the, since the three of us are kind of the newest members, what is the history of providing these evaluations? Has it always been an outside entity, or has it?
No, and I had put, I can send this to you guys again. I think it was at the, what month are we in? I think it was at the May meeting that I mentioned, like, kind of what the history was since I have been here. Now, my understanding, and this is something Lori is in another meeting, she was going to try and hop on, that she can speak to with what, how the board did evaluations with Chad. My understanding was there wasn't ever really a written anything until I suggested doing, until, I forget how it came up, whether I suggested it or a board member, it might have been Abby suggested doing a 360. And I researched organizations and found one that works with units of local government. And so in 2019 and 2020, they did the 360. So we had a written report, but the board never wrote anything separately. So I've always given you essentially what was given to you this year, right? Where I write out what I've accomplished, and give my goals, talk about what goals from last year I've accomplished and haven't accomplished, and then talk about, kind of with, not this past year, but like, where we fit and where we've, what we've accomplished in terms of the strategic plan. But I've never received anything in writing from the board that I can recall.
Provide something to the consultants who are providing, who are doing.
Yeah, so the board filled out surveys.
Right.
So I did get feedback, which is really helpful. But I've never, yeah, I'm trying to think if there was like, because the first year, I started in January of 2015. My first eval was in, I think, May, May or June of 2016? And that was just an oral, where Carlos just had everyone go around the table and state how they thought I was doing. And then 2017 was, hang on, I can't remember.
And I'm sure I've seen this documentation, but what is the name of the group that does the?
The Charmed, the Charmed Foundation.
Charmed?
Charmed, C-H-A-R-M-M apostrophe D. They are the nonprofit arm of some, I can't remember the name of the organization. But basically, they give unit, their goal is to support units of local government and help provide coaching, training, and networking amongst north suburban units of local government. And so they did a full 360. I can't at the moment remember the company that it is, run out of, it's a, you know, recognized company. So yeah, and then, yeah, so 2016 and 2017, it was just an oral one. Oh, I did in 2018 create a template from ALA that I was hoping for, like, this kind of a thing. And then, so I did get a written, I don't remember who wrote that. And then the 360 eval from the Charm Foundation, the last two, in 2019 and 2020.
Just another quick question, Kate. So these evaluations are really summative evaluations, right? I mean, they're once a year. Do you get any formative feedback throughout the year from the president, or anything like that? It's enough, so it's really just this one annual evaluation, and that's it?
I mean, Carlos would express if there were, I mean, I think he put it, he put it really clearly at the first meeting, like, hey, if there's something I need you to know, I'll let you know. So he would call me, and we would talk about stuff, but there wasn't anything formal. And of course, it isn't really, you know, the board president isn't really, like, the whole board is my boss.
Right.
Right? So you act in, oh, and here comes Lori, as a group.
Yeah.
So she can speak to, yeah, her remembrance from before me of what kind of had happened.
You're the only one, they do a, provide a 364 in the group, right?
Yeah, we do do, as, you know, Lori presented this year to you guys, we do do the manager feedback, where staff can answer anonymously questions about their managers, or about me, or the assistant director. This was the first year we got any for me, which was exciting. So I always, that, that isn't true. I do get some, I have gotten some in the past. Lori, we're talking about like, past evaluations and what has been done. And so in the past, I have gotten feedback from my managers on things, because I always ask, and I always ask in our one-on-ones throughout the year, like, are there things that I can be doing better? You know, kind of the start-stop continuing model of like, what are things you'd like me to start doing to help better support you, things you'd like to see me stop doing? And I'm very fortunate, because many of the members of the management team are very good at providing really good feedback. That, for me, is the most, yes, it's helpful to look at, as a whole, what you have accomplished, what you haven't. Did you achieve what you wanted to achieve? Did priorities change? But for me, it's also the feedback piece, because I think it's very easy, especially in a higher-up leadership position, to think that you are doing everything perfectly, but of course, you're human, so that is not the case. And so getting feedback in order to help you improve as a leader, I think is critically important. And, but I also know that the board only sees me once a month, right? So there's that piece as well.
But that's not true. We see you in all different forms and functions. We just don't see you face-to-face all the time. And, and I think that to not have a written document that you can put your hands on is, is not professional. I think everyone deserves to get feedback, not only on what you perhaps need to improve on or change directions on, but also to tell you what you're doing well, so you can keep doing it. I think we just assume that if we haven't told you, then that's okay. But it's really important to tell you what you're doing well. And I think that when you talk about an evaluation, it's not just a negative, here's what we need to do to fix anything. It's also so that you can continue to grow, and that you can continue to do what you're doing well. And if there's an area that you need to maybe look at some support, well, that's the only way you're going to get that information. So obviously, you can all tell that I feel strongly about it.
I agree. I think it, I think it, there should definitely be a written reports review and assessment, 360, what have you. Yes, I agree.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, you know, at Loyola, we have an annual faculty evaluation, and it's very formal. I mean, we have to generate all the content, and then, you know, our chair or department chair reviews it, meets with us. I mean, it's a very formalized, and everything is documented. So I certainly support formalizing the process, having written documentation. And as Barbara said, of course, you know, I mean, not just talking about opportunities for improvement, but saying, hey, you're doing an awesome job in X, Y, Z.
Have you been, and this question is for both Kate and Lori, are you happy with the Charmed Foundation? Is that the way we want to continue going?
I thought they did a great job. They were very affordable. I think it cost us like $150. Does that sound about right, Lori? Oh, I think you're still muted.
Sorry. That sounds about right.
Okay, all right. That sounds great.
Well, I have to disagree. Why would we let somebody else do it? I mean, if we, if we own the process and develop it with Kate, and there are goals that are meaningful to her, because I don't know enough about the 360 process. I don't know if they look at developing the goals and measuring them, or if they look at end results, which again, is summative rather than formative. I, I wouldn't be so happy to let that go to an organization.
Well, I think we should work with them on sort of specifying what the goals are. But I don't think it's in our, I don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to provide this service if it's not something that we do. And I think it's almost, I think it's a conflict of interest to have us, who are providing an evaluation, we're providing some of the, some of the degrees of the 360. I don't think we should be the one. I don't think we should be the ones who are sort of summarizing everyone's information.
So are we definitely doing the 360? Cause I feel like a 360 is very helpful to get feedback from all parties. That's a massive project to do every year. That takes a tremendous amount of staff time and resources and administrative time and resources. I do think that they can be very helpful. I feel like what Barbara is talking about is a different process.
Not it. Okay.
What does Charm do exactly?
Um. Do you mean as an entity or for the 360?
What, what do they do for us?
Um, well, we have, they do executive coaching. So I and other members of the management team have taken advantage of that um with a certified executive coach. They, they have peer-to-peer networking groups um that different members of the management team. It's a, it's a leadership foundation, right? So it's all members of management. They've done the 360 for us. Um. Oh, they have a leadership academy that we've had people wanting to go, but the timing hasn't been quite right. But that is something that um I know we have a few people that are interested. I'm trying to think what else, Lori.
So what is the $150? What was that referring to?
It's for the 360 eval.
Okay. So, but you said it's a massive, I mean, that sounds very inexpensive. I mean, if it's a massive.
It is because it's underwritten by this other organization with this nonprofit arm whose goal is to, to support units of local government. So like the executive coaching is $20 an hour.
Oh, okay.
Like it's, it's.
It's very, very non-profit.
Yes, it's, they're charging because they think it's important to charge something.
Sure.
Really, they're like, we aren't doing this to make money. We're doing this as a support. It's, I don't want to call it like a charity, but it essentially.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I support uh seeking out expertise when we lack expertise and doing ourselves if we have the, I mean, that's my view, you know? So if we, but you know, I'm not an expert in evaluation. So if there are things that we don't know, I'm, I'm all for seeking out if, if it's helpful, you know?
Would it be helpful if I reached out to other libraries to find out if they're willing to share whatever evaluation form that they use for their directors?
I think it would be.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's helpful. I mean, I, I, I always feel like we should not be doing things that are way out of line with our peer institutions. You know? So I, I think, you know, we don't have to be absolutely in sync, but I think it's a, as responsible board members, I think we should reasonably aligned with what our peer institutions are doing.
And it sounds like you guys are also interested in seeing if anyone works with an outside organization that could run the evaluation process. Is that accurate as well?
Well.
No. Or I mean, Ron kind of like setting it up for us or?
Or just getting us. Giving us feedback on it. I don't know if it's, if it, if it makes sense to.
I think it's scary. I think it's scary to take on something that nobody is expert yet. But I also, and I think there are enough resources out there in examples and people from the ALA, the, the Library Association. I mean, there are, you know, certainly consultants or whatever. But I also think it's a really good thing for the board to learn about. And I think that we can educate ourselves to be better board members by investing in this process rather than hand it off. And I, I, that mean, that doesn't mean it can't be a combination of things. But boy, when I hear about going around the table and telling Kate what they thought. I mean, that's, that is awful.
But are we providing just the board's feedback on this evaluation? Or are we providing any input from staff? Cause if we're not providing that, then I think it, it, it's more limited in its worth.
It's not, it, it's a goal. In other words, if staff relationships is a goal that Kate wants to work on and it means more professional development or it means professional development in certain areas, then how do you measure if that was achieved? It, it isn't anything that we look at and have to make an opinion about because it will be a measurable goal. It will be something that we can all look at and say, hmm, circulation has increased or the budget has been met or intergovernmental relationships have improved by doing these, these and these things. So it, it isn't anything that the board assumes the responsibility for saying yay or nay. It's Kate showing us um by developing the goals with us and then demonstrating how they've been met.
So if we, if a goal was, and this is not based on anything reality, I'm just saying, you know, if there was something about working with um the assistant directors or with um heads of departments, how do we measure that without getting a, with getting, without getting the feedback from the other entities?
I think that it depends on if it's, and what they state in here is very simple. If it's a project and the assistant director and managers are involved and the project was successfully implemented, you can pretty much assume it's because the team worked well together. I don't think it's the kind of thing where you're going to pick apart who did what. So again, the larger goal is to complete a project, which includes working with the assistant director, whatever the manager is. And so it, it, it's again, looking at the project, how well it went, how well it met the goal. Again, I, it's not forming opinions as much as it is looking at evidence.
Some of the evidence is going to be, I think, easily quantable and, and others going to be more native, you know, more impressionist. I think the data, I mean, we should be data-driven and evidence-based, but, but it's going to take different forms, right? Depending on what, what, what's the input, you know?
Exactly.
Right?
So where do you think we should go from here?
And when would you guys like to meet again? If we're gathering samples, we'd like a little bit of time just to gather a good sampling of things. So you guys can kind of see. My view is that once you guys figure out kind of the nuts and bolts of how you want to do it, then we can construct a timeline. Like I can work on constructing a, a sample timeline based on other things that we typically have going on in a year for what that might need to look like.
And so how appropriate is it, Kate, for us to ask you what your thoughts are on this?
I mean, um, having never sat down and crafted an evaluation this way, I think it feels appropriate because I mean, I'm the one, I mean, when, when we redid the staff evals, we asked for feedback from all of the managers to make sure we were hitting all the right points. I think Lori, though, is probably a better expert, being the HR professional. I'll just say that I'm just happy to be getting a written um email. And I think that it, it, you know, I think I, I, I see where, I think more, I think what you're talking about is kind of that internal control. If we, if this was a financial thing, we wouldn't want to just take one person's word that they didn't embezzle money. I'm not suggesting that any of us did. This is a recording that sounded really bad, but like we have strong internal controls on the financial side so that we have multiple pieces of, multiple people looking at things from different angles. And I think that's where you're getting at. And so we're kind of playing a chicken egg where it's like, we need to develop goals that are specific to my work as a library director, as an executive director, as someone who is a library executive director in Northbrook. And until we know what those are, we don't necessarily know what types of data we're going to need to be able to measure them.
Right.
And so that's where we're kind of, I think, pulling a little bit. I, I, I love all the things I'm hearing, you know, that we will have data-driven decision-making, that we'll have smart goals that aren't going to just be like, we hope that you're out more in the community, but that have really concrete action items that can help move things forward with the understanding that this is a living document and things can shift and change as neat, like if a pandemic happens. So um, I for one am very excited to see where this leads. I think that this all sounds good and, and understanding that data is not only quantitative, but can also be qualitative. And that that's something that I think a discussion with the whole board is going to be necessary to talk about how to gather qualitative data without bias, right? Cause that's where it's easy to have things tilt.
Right.
So that's my take, but I'll.
I think as far as our, these are sort of some broad points, the timeline, I think it would be helpful to if this is sort of our starting point, is this is sort of the beginning of the timeline. I think when we get to the end and after the evaluation has been done, it would be helpful as part of that evaluation to go over the goals that are set for the upcoming year. So sort of looking ahead a year from now, I would like to say maybe we sit down, we evaluate how the last year went and at the same time, set the goals for the coming year. And then as far as the intermediate sort of um timeline, does two months seem like a good time for people to sort of say, okay, this is what I'm going to look into? And I think that we'll get some evaluations from other libraries, if Lori could help with that. Um, and maybe if we all sort of took a stab at, shouldn't say we, we don't need to take a stab at it. You've already done it. If we look at the goals that were set forth prior to the pandemic, you know, pre-pandemic things, what those would be. And I'm not sure if any of the goals for the upcoming year, they may be influenced by the pandemic as well. I haven't, I'm just thinking out loud. I haven't given that enough thought to think about what that would look like, but I'm assuming that there's going to be some post-COVID sort of
Conversations.
complications and just sort of, um, I think from the standpoint of programming, from a standpoint of community, from a standpoint of staff, everyone's going to be a little jumpy and it's going to be a little rough. So I would say that's going to be, you know, that will be one of the goals that would probably be specific to this next year, but please not following that. Hopefully we'll be able to, you know, use a sharp B and X that one out.
Good point.
So maybe that's the um, to sort of, if we can all sort of brainstorm a little bit on what our goals will be. And I think Kate, you probably have yours eloquently sort of spelled out.
I'll resend them. So you guys don't have to dig through the board packet. I'll send them separately. Would it be helpful to see how I listed the goals in non-pandemic year? Like, would you guys like to see just my list of all my goals for previous years?
Sure.
Would that be helpful?
Yeah. That would be good. And then I think we can go through it and kind of edit it and sort of say, um, and I think the next time we should also have a conversation about like how many goals we want. I mean, I don't think this is going to be a, I think 18 points seems a little excessive. I think we need to, I'm one of those people, I like things to be a little bit more condensed and brief, but um that's sort of my leanings. Other people may be more um one-winded or, you know, complete. So I think we can kind of take a look at that and um add or edit from that list of goals that we think is appropriate for us to be looking at. I think some of these goals are not necessarily going to be things that are going to be within the board's purview.
I would also say that maybe we can look at the overarching categories such as um community relations, that being a category. And then what goals might fit under that, facilities management, budget management. Those might be the, the bigger headings. And then see what goals would fit where and are we missing any categories that we need to add? Such as your good thought, Maura, on post-pandemic responsibilities or whatever it is. So maybe we can come up with a list of categories under which the goals would fit. And those would stay pretty much the same and every year or they would, as you hoped, the pandemic goals would be gone and the goals would change.
So we have on the staff eval, we have, um, well, okay, we, we didn't do this, we did a simple one this year because of COVID, but we have kind of like, what are people's essential job functions? And then a separate category on what are their goals? Like what are ways in which they want to grow or learn or evolve um as an individual, as a department to help the library? So you have those things that are always going to be stable, right? Like managing the facility, that's, the building will hopefully always be here, right? But then COVID hopefully won't always. So you could also separate it into two categories of like the core, this will always be here, and then things that evolve and change over time. It might be a one-year thing. It might be a five-year thing, but this is something that is going to morph and change.
Do, do you guys think it makes sense for us to regroup in two months? Is that too soon? Not soon enough?
I mean, that seems like a, a, amount of time, you're talking about August?
Yeah.
I mean, that probably is, I, I think that's probably more than enough time.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be. I was thinking a month is possibly too short. Um, so.
Yeah, I think six to eight weeks seems reasonable.
I agree.
I think six, eight, it sounds like enough, but I think I'm probably going to be out of town in six weeks. So um.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town early August.
Okay.
We'll have Jennifer send out some dates. So we'll, that, that's always the hardest part, right? Finding a date. And we'll, um, by that point, the executive order, um, Pritzker has basically said that it will be expired. And so we'll meet in person at the library. So Kayhan, I know you're primarily working from home, but I think that you are occasionally going into Loyola?
Yeah, I was in uh, what, Friday? Yeah, I'm, I'm going maybe one day a week. I'll probably up it maybe two days a week.
Okay. Um, cause we're happy to, I'm happy to adjust if um, you know, I mean, school will still hopefully be out, Maura, right? But um, you know, if, if we need to meet later um, ear- earlier morning with being in, well, I shouldn't say too early because with being in person, it, we do need to keep it within the hours the library is open so that we can be open to the public. So if any member of the public wants to come, they can. Well, but you never know. Um, so, so that's kind of our structure.
Do we have the choice of um doing it virtually if we choose to?
Not after July 25th.
Oh, really?
Well, I shouldn't say that. Pritzker's newest executive order, the reason we're able to do this is because of the executive order declaring us still in a state of emergency. He has said in his most recent executive order, look, I'm going to extend it for another month, but basically expect to be, have to be back in person. The state legislature isn't in session again until fall. So even though there were a bunch of law, even though there were a bunch of laws proposed that would allow permanent remote meeting options, none of those made it onto the floor for a vote. And so they either have to be brought back, some of them were sent back to committee. They either have to be brought back or there'll be new bills reintroduced, none of which will happen until sometime this fall, if at all.
Okay.
But otherwise, we can't have a remote meeting. If like, we'll use Kayhan, he was our only person with our remote board policy. He had to, was it a conference, I think, that you had to?
Yeah, I was at a conference last January, so it was about a year and a half ago before the pandemic hit.
And, and so he was allowed to call in remotely. But that can only happen under very strict, so it has to be like a medical reason. Or if you're traveling for work and are unable to physically be here. So like if he was on vacation, we would have said like, nope, sorry. So it has very specific rules right now about what you can and cannot do in terms of remote meetings.
Okay.
I know, right? I know, right? Ah, the Open Meetings Act.
I'm so sorry, but I have um a dog here who's fifteen, who really has to go out.
Should we adjourn?
Yeah, you could just declare it, Maura.
Okay, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned.